It's six oh two P M. Roll call. President Hernandez here. Vice President Estes here. Trustee Altamorano.
Here.
Trustee Banda. Trustee Sotomayor.
Here.
I'm gonna go ahead and appoint teen intern Madison Taylor for the pledge of allegiance day.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Uh adjustments to the agenda. The library board will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order, add urgency items, no abstentions or no votes on consent calendar items. And request consent calendar items to be removed from the consent calendar for discussion. The library board may also remove items from the consent calendar prior to that portion of the agenda. For purposes of official city record, the library board may take care of these issues by entertaining a formal motion. Public comment, there's a time limit of three minutes for anyone wishing to address the library board on these matters. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda or any public comments?
Um there are no adjustments to the agenda.
And no public comments, no, no. Um matters not appearing on the agenda, if you wish to address the library board concerning any item within the board's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the president. At the time, state your name and address for the record. The president reserves the right to place a time limit of three lim- three minutes on each person's presentation. It is requested that longer presentations may be submitted to the library administrator's office in writing forty eight hours before the meeting. Item A consent agenda. A one approval of minutes for the regular library board meeting of August thirteenth twenty twenty four.
Think we have um people in the audience wanting to speak on matters not appearing on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, um I would just like to introduce the library board to our twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five teen interns. If I can just have my teen intern stand up. Drew Brennan. Genesis Almo Dovar and Madison Taylor.
Hello.
Hi.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Do we want a photo?
Can you guys come up for a quick photo?
Let me put him behind us.
Okay. Just go on up behind them and they'll take a picture, don't worry.
Come on Amber. Or Liz, you wanna come up?
You too.
Both of you, come on. I know it's an even picture. Oh, we have Alejandra.
No, it's just.
Oh.
Picture is okay.
Yeah, I'm in the picture, there we go, smile, great, thanks guys.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, good luck with the program. We're excited to see everything that comes out of it, it always fun. Great, great things. Alright, does anyone have any other comments, anything we wanna share? No, that's it, that's alright, let's move on. Okay, so now let's move on to, thank you so much for coming. Um item A consent agenda, A one approval of minutes for the regular library board meeting of August thirteenth twenty twenty four.
Um I do have one thing, uh then the roll call, I um I I don't think um trustee Banda was here. The last time, so um in the roll call, we need to fix that.
Thank you.
That's the only thing, that's that was it.
Perfect, so so when you do make the motion, if you do it with that change, then Amber will just process that and get that done. If you guys are okay with the rest.
Yeah, I make, yeah, I make I make the motion to approve with just the change on that, just to make sure that we had everybody.
And I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Do we need to vote for this?
Yes.
Okay.
So um trustee Altamorano.
Yes.
Trustee Banda.
Yes.
Trustee Estes.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
And trustee Sotomayor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will move on to item B, action items, discussion, action, recommendation, deny. Item B one, Imperial Public Library mission statement.
Okay, good evening, um according to the American Library Association, every public library should have, and I'm quoting, um should have a central. Guiding mission statement that defines the library's purpose and describes who the library serves. Additionally, the vision statement that clearly divine defines what the library would be if the mission statement was achieved. And a list of values, commitments, or goals that would help the library achieve its mission statement. At the minimum, a mission statement is needed to provide guidance for all library um efforts at the life of the library. At this time, there is no evidence of an adopted mission statement for the Imperial Public Library. In order to apply for many grant opportunities, the public library is required to have a mission statement. Identifying the library's purpose and who the library serves. It is requested of the board to temporarily adopt the following mission statement. To serve during the interim period until workshops can be conducted. With the board to collaborative collaboratively establish a permanent mission statement, vision statement and core values. The proposed temporary mission statement is as follows. The mission of the Imperial Public Library is to empower our diverse community through innovation and collaboration. To provide free and open access to credible information, equitable programs and services. And foster lifelong learning and sustainability. We strive to create a welcoming space where all individuals can explore ideas, acquire knowledge. And connect with others to enrich their lives and strengthen our community. Staff requests the Imperial Public, uh excuse me, Imperial Imperial Library Board of Trustees. To adopt the proposed station mission statement to serve during the interim period until the board can collaboratively. Establish a permanent mission statement to provide guidance for all efforts of the library for the diverse community we serve. I'll stand for any questions.
Did you get a chance to um discuss uh it being interim at all? I I think we we had some internal discussions that um. This is the type of thing that every single solitary word should be carefully looked at and re- so we'd like you to adopt it, so you have it, so she could include it in grants and everything. But that would give us an opportunity also to deal with feedback in the future and we'd bring it back at a point in the future to make sure that it does fit everything you wanted.
I'm okay with that, I understand we need it right now to approve for the grants and um like like you guys say, we can just review it later. See if we need to make any changes.
You can certainly make some edits now too, if you have them ready, but it's also um I I think that city manager would tell you, uh the council took a year. So we're hoping it, you know, it does take a while, cause it's a it's an important statement.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think for the sake of um having something to use for these grants process, we should adopt the mission statement being interim. Until we decide.
I agree, um and I also can anticipate that the sm- for their edits must be likely something regarding instead of audio books, whatever new technology.
Yeah, right, yeah, perfect.
So do we have any motions?
Yeah, just a quick comment, the 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 council process is a work in process, so city attorney references a year, we're not done. And and so my suggestion uh with respect to doing something just on an interim basis is that you um. I I I think the what staff put together is excellent and as I sit here, I I don't ha- I I don't have anything that I would I would change. That that said, um I I my understanding is that mi- some of the grants that uh the library applies for. They ask for a mission statement and so that's why uh we're we're asking that you do it on an interim basis. And in order to give you an opportunity to uh have it marinate, if you will, and and um. Think about each of the words, uh as I've learned with this with this with the city council process. Uh and and we have a consultant involved, he's doing other things, but one of the things involved is the mission statement. And every and he brings up points about just about any word you look at. There's somebody out there that will take offense.
Absolutely.
Uh and so uh uh I would I would look at it with that kind of mindset to make sure that it that it's that it's very precise in what you're attempting. Uh to capture, uh because this is more, it's more than something you put on your website. Uh it 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 will, it gives direction to to staff and and it helps you prioritize those things that you that you want. For example, one of the things the city council did when uh two budget cycles ago, uh they established priorities. And one of the priorities they established had to do with technology. So if you'll notice on their uh in their budget, uh and with the some of the things they've approved recently. Um uh all have to do with technology and making sure that we're out out front of uh problems and avoiding. Uh problems and making sure our security is is out front. And 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 providing technology to staff for many of the things they do on a day to day basis. So uh you know, the the there is a saying that your your. Uh mission statement should fit on a bumper sticker, there's that school of thought. So that when you see happiest place on earth, you know what everybody's talking about, right? Uh but I think having a mission statement that's a little bit longer is probably more appropriate uh for for our purposes here. Uh but I I think it's uh it will be time well spent because as you look at this, you 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 it, I think it'll help you. Um with a vision of what you want the library to become.
I agree, it's the mission statement's important because essentially is your roadmap to everything, so um I I I'm fine with it. It's good for the interim.
Does anyone wanna make a motion?
I motion to approve the mission statement for the interim.
I'll second that motion. Do we need a roll call? Or do we need a vote?
Yes.
Trustee Alma Altamorano.
Yes.
Trustee Banda.
Yes.
Trustee Estes.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Trustee Sotomayor.
Yes.
Thank you. And I will be um in during this interim time uh be providing emails with um resources for you to um. Get more um information of about services um and. Resources that libraries serve and some of the goals that I M L S and the California State Library. Has that um aligns with what we align with.
Thank you.
And then we'll have workshops.
Yeah, the workshop, I'm like, oh, yeah, that would be great, for sure.
That'll be fun.
Yes.
And for those workshops, we'll um go from the um the mission, we'll work on the mission statement, core values and the vision. So uh we'll. Have a great road roadmap.
Yes. Alright, awesome, um let's move on to item C, work session, C one, Red Panda Day. And that is myself and trustee Altamirano. So we haven't really had an entire chance to connect, but we did start kind of emailing back and forth today. Um trying to figure out what our budget is, I think we wanna make this uh. The least financial impact as possible, so I think as long as we have the movie and we have a craft. Um we talked a little bit about if there will be snacks, but that was something. My mom hat went on. Because I was like, the popcorn machine is great, but what would it, what would it be to have an essential snack box? Like, you know, like a a s- uh. Like a subscription, you know, because I feel like we're thinking for one day, but it could be bigger if we have a for so many activities coming in. Um but on that token, healthy snacks, right? So um I think it it all ties in, it we we can have junk food, but it doesn't really align with like what we're trying to. Do here in the summer with with feeding our guests, but you know, very simple things, but I mean, this opened up a whole another conversation. Um so I think what we can do is we'll plan on connecting, um I don't know if you have any additional notes that you wanted to share?
I, well, I was telling Amber bef- uh before the meeting, what I did is I went to the website that Amber provided. Has a bunch of things, interesting, educational, and there are activities there. I was also thinking uh about what Dennis uh said the other day that is important not to like a. Create more work for the staff.
Yeah.
That's one thing, so it's like, as you said, it's like the movie and.
And activity, yeah.
That is, that will in ignite the interest and get that thing. A- and the the website has a lot of things like a, well, it has an activity book in PDF. And in my, in my opinion, it's more like a small children, but probably that's would be, that would be the audience for the. Uh for the movies like a drawing, coloring, things for the thing. And there are also other things like a red panda family tree and it's not mother and dad.
Oh, that's cool.
It's not mother and dad, it's like a educational things, like how many red pandas are in the days, how many are we losing?
Oh wow.
And environment, and it's very, very cool because it's in. Uh it's a small amount of words, but important facts, simply explained, well designed, and also. A a list of uh facts about the red panda, what do they eat or whatever? And what is not a good idea to have a red panda as a pet in case.
I don't know any of that, that's really helpful, I know none of it.
A red panda is not that big, so you could think like a a German shepherd is way bigger than a red panda. They're not that big, so I mean, you know, if it's cute little animal.
Well, I think that the I I I don't know, in the, in Washington, they have red pandas in the Smithsonian, so. So I I I didn't know anything about. So we can connect. I think that it would be easy to decide one activity and perhaps perhaps just having one or two of the posters printed there, something like that.
Do we have capabilities in-house to print posters, so that would, yeah, perfect, see, music to my ears, so we can go ahead and connect on that.
Which ones, so I I will, I will email you and.
Yeah, we'll get it moving um and make the final decisions because it is coming up.
What's the date and time?
That is on September twentieth, it is a Friday. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend in person, um I just found out my calendars were all. And so I will be at the Imperial Valley Regional Chamber of Commerce Annual Dinner, um B H renewables is being awarded business of the year, so I kind of had. Like a hard decision of like, where do I need to be? Unfortunately, I have to be at.
You'll know everything about red pandas in.
Please keep me informed.
Send your picture and make you jealous.
Oh, 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 my goodness, um.
Well, just let us know, what do we need to help you with?
The movies, the the twenty.
Turning red, yeah, it's gonna be on the twentieth, I think from five thirty to. It is a Friday, cause a red candidate is on a Saturday, so we will be celebrating the day before that.
I will be, I will have time there from the eighteen to the twenty three, but I can.
The pork.
Can do the the activities things and select.
So maybe what we can do is prepare um the logistics and then convert the ad hoc to someone else, is does that legal?
It's you, anything's, anything's. But, you know, i- if you just pick someone else to attend or you can have anyone help, once, once you're just planning an event, it's okay.
Well, Ivan and I will be able to go, so just let us know what you need us to do, just make sure you get everything ready.
We we're great, we were crazy.
Trustee Banda.
Banda. Oh, yeah, trustee Banda.
I'm looking at my.
Yeah, cause we're kinda gonna shift to the volunteer mode on this one, we're close, and so anyone who wants to pitch in.
And well, I I will be able to help when you guys need a subsidy.
If there's anything um that can be done the days prior, I I mean, I I don't know how much, you know, we can set up for a meeting a days in advance, but um. If it's anything, I I can make myself available that week, um so we can just go ahead and connect on that.
That sounds great.
What time is the movie, too?
Five thirty.
And then um I I will make myself available if you'd like to come in and meet, so we can um kind of get things checked off the list and.
I I imagine you're gonna have the kids coming earlier than five thirty for the activities?
We're gonna have the activities.
Then in the background?
In the back, yeah, it just depends.
Yeah, I I I would think five thirty since it's a family event and they can um.
My my personal opinion.
So people can come as a family.
Um I I I think kids' attention span, you know, they're not gonna get upset if they're working on a craft and the movie's playing on the TV.
Or if not, they can just watch the movie and have the drawing and do that at home, sometimes they they keep the in- interest after the movie.
Yep, okay, so we'll go ahead and connect on that, um and we, since it's a work session, we can just continue on, right?
Yes, yes, and then um we can meet, and then I do have one question, would you like us to move forward with creating a? Um a kind of a donation um to adopt the red panda?
I'm like, I I don't see why not, we can make a contribution from it, um do you have any?
No, no, I was like, that is great, I like that idea.
Yeah, um.
I I'm I'm not sure if the rest of the board is aware of of what I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah, so um we, I guess for online audience, we found that you can adopt a red panda plush. Um I don't know the exact organization name, but it's, I believe, sixty dollars. Yeah.
Foundation.
Yeah, Wildlife Foundation, thank you Amber, um and so you can do the sixty dollar donation and then you get a red panda plush. Um so I do not see that, but I mean, whatever's chipped in, right? And um I think it goes. Huh, yeah. Yeah, that's only fifty dollars left. And if we see a red panda making its appearance in our social media, then you know why. Um alright, so then yes, we can go ahead and move forward with that donation box for the red pandas. Um do we want to move on to item C two?
Yes.
Okay, uh so we're gonna move on to item C two, National Comic Book Day, Open the Magic, uh trustee Sotomayor, please.
Okay, for this one, I know I need to get together with you on this, Amber, cause um I it's, I don't think anything. Super big or anything needs to be planned about it, but I'm pretty sure we already have the resources here, it's. It's just putting it out there, national.
Perfect.
Yes, so um it's just making sure that we just highlight and maybe like, you know, quick posts, letting. Kids and everybody know, hey, come in, come check it out, it's comic book day, open the magic, and you know.
We have comic book stores here too, right?
Yeah.
Would they come?
Maybe, I mean.
It'd be good for business for them.
Yeah, if we, we can.
We had a local one in Imperial once upon a time.
So it's just like, we're just gonna have comic books for them to come and see, or are we gonna? What what is that? Um, I don't know, it's a work in progress.
You might have so many different things going on. Okay, so we.
When is the National Comic Day?
What, what's the date?
It's uh September twenty fifth, it would be a Wednesday.
So we're very busy.
I had another idea and I I just ate it because it was in September. And I said, um this would be amazing, and then I look, I was like, no, so I'll save it for next year. It might not be as important next year, but you know, it's fine.
Yeah, but it would be a good idea on the comic book, like they say, call some of the people, the vendors to the comics, and maybe you did something where they have tables around the library.
Oh, like the resource tables?
Yeah.
You know, that is cool because you you might bring in a different demographic and they probably have like comic book, I I don't know. I'm not a comic book fan, but maybe exchanges or like get togethers.
I'll tell you, the comic book fans in our town, like, very intense, from what I know.
Are we having to then come all dressed up for Comic Day?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Are we gonna have them come out all dressed up for Comic Day, you know how people, they go usually when they go to a comic?
Comic Con? Oh, it's called um.
If they're dressing up?
What is it called when you're dressed up like the character? There is a name, I can't think out of my brain.
Gotta go ahead and get, what are you getting, she's a woman? It's her idea, so we follow her.
I was thinking it's like National Comic Book Day with that, and it's also called Open the Magic, so it's encouraging kids to read, so maybe I I can do a Harry Potter one, so. It's kind of both, it's kind of both together, but it would be, those are good ideas, so I guess we'll, I'll connect with you next week.
Is this around the corner?
I know.
What's?
So we need to do like right away, I think right now we're, we need to get some type of media announcing it, right?
Yeah, we we need to connect to actually have a plan of what we're going to be advertising.
Friday?
Yes.
Trustee Banda has a comment or question, please.
So this is on top of the other items that are already being organized by the by the library staff?
Yes.
Cause I know there's always so many amazing things happening that I think your coordinators, right, put together.
Correct, um actually, you um each at the last meeting, um I don't, I'm I'm not sure if the president would like to go ahead and go over. How it was broken down to um the ad hoc committees.
Oh, yes.
And so they're meeting and pl- doing most of the planning, um so.
Like if it's gonna be an activity or if it's gonna be, you know, setting out books or a movie, um we had a a big list of um.
A calendar, right?
A calendar of dates.
Of every day.
Santa Claus.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It just kept going, and it was a whole bunch of different dates, and so we were trying to select which um. Dates we wanted to highlight, and they were fun ones, and so we created ad hoc committees to work on an activity for the library to do, so we can bring the community in. Um and so that's how we came about these, um so. Why remember the Gilmore Days event?
That one was already.
That one was a toxin.
Yeah, that was prior, yeah.
It was, it was just basically um going off of the what? Libraries and anything with uh national uh book days. Um that they usually have in September, sometimes October, so we were building off of that. um that they usually have in September, sometimes October, so we were building off of that, and I I think what it is, is that it was already on your um staff's radar as well, so we were just building off of that with the um intention of not trying to overload the staff. That that being key.
Yeah, because I see, I always check and the activities are great, they're they're like top of their game.
Yes.
So this is the, but that's the coordinators, the two coordinators, there's a coordinator that was hired not too long ago, right? The ones that take care of those things.
We have a literacy coordinator who is um provides the literacy programs, and then we have our literacy program um coordinator who um provides the programming, uh Elizabeth, who is here tonight, yes, yes. But but in addition to that, we we have a great team with the library staff, all, um, if you'll during the summer, during um each each person on the staff, they provide programs, um, so even our a front desk circle um circulation um library assistants, they work the front desk, and that's their main job. But um, one person provides craft activities once a month for um children. And then one staff member, um, the um literacy assistant, he is the person who oversees the gaming um activities and the chess program. So uh, we have amazing staff that step above and beyond um what their job description entails to make make things happen.
I know, they do.
So thank you.
Yeah, we did get commended, I don't even remember who I talked to. And maybe it might have been more than one person that said, wow, Imperial, you're the library, they're stepping up their game with all, you know, of all our offerings, and I said, we, you know, we're trying, so thank you, and so that goes back to obviously the great work that you guys are doing internally, um. Just just a little direction, you know, putting in all the work, um, so thank you, you know, that we're getting noticed, and I think to get noticed in a good way and to get that comment, you always hear the bad, you always hear, you know, you can do this better, you can do this, so to hear compliments is always a good thing, so I commend the library and team for doing that, so thank you. Social media is great, yeah. We are in a great place, I think, uh, if you wanna look back just a year ago, we've done. We've done a great stride, um, okay, so are we closing C two? For, do you wanna move on to C three, okay, let's go on to item C three, Gilmore Girls Day Library Event, um, Vice President Estes and Trustee Soto Mayor, please.
So we were able to meet already and with Amber, and things are coming along, I don't wanna give a lot to what we're doing because it's kinda like a surprise. Um, I- Yvonne and I are meeting today to prepare a video to ask for people to au- audition to be our Lorelai and Rory, and maybe a few more persons. Um, we defined yesterday where every room is going to be on the Gilmore Girl Hassle, so we kinda got that under control. We're gonna have a special activity for the little ones, so if you have a tutu or do have a lead dancer, make sure you bring your kit. Um, and we don't wanna give a lot, we're trying to figure out the the expenses to the lowest we can. Um, and we are trying to get some people from out of the library to come and help us, but it's coming along now.
I'm excited, I think you're on my algorithm, cuz I keep seeing a lot of Gilmore Girls things, and I'm just like, I've never watched the show.
Phone's listening to you.
It is, I'm just like, why did I put them up here, um, so I'm excited to see that come to fruition, thank you. Um, and then we're gonna go on to item C four, Garden to Table Fundraising Event, Trustee Soto Mayor.
Okay, so that one, um, and this one's gonna take a little bit more time, obviously, I'll work with uh uh Amber, and then we'll discuss details with everybody else, cuz this will be a um obviously fundraising event, um, important for the library, so I'm thinking sometime in April, I will look at dates with everybody, and then obviously we'll work with the city on this, and that way, um, we kinda have the basic breakdown of it, but just to make sure that all all of us can be um present there, cuz that's very important for us, and I don't know, is what, is this one of the first times that we're doing this, or?
For the library, yes, yeah, uh, we we've had fundraisers for recreation and then um, long, long, long time ago. Um, the Try to Cook Up, Cook Off was actually fundraiser for us. Very, very long time ago.
Okay.
The library and the um recreation.
I remember when Parks and Rec was that long ago. I was a lot younger.
Like the fifty fifty, the the dinners, the fifty fifty drawings and stuff, we did one of them.
And this is gonna be the, this is the date, this is.
A- in April, sometimes, yeah.
The date before, like in January, right?
Yeah, yes.
What is our date?
Uh, we're we're looking at April. April is the, we we just need to figure out the exact date in April, just make sure that the calendar for the city is uh free, that we're not in um, obviously in um Easter, yeah, Easter weekend or anything, cuz I believe Easter weekend's at the beginning, yeah.
So then, it's it's tentative that April twenty third day.
Yes. That everything is free that day, so um.
And then I do not wanna put you on the spot by ha- having these items on the discussion work session, um. But are you fine with have having this on the calendar, I mean, on the agenda item each month?
Okay, yeah, that way I can provide um some updates, but um now I've uh been able to see a little bit, um, get a little bit more contacts with people that would probably be willing to uh help the city at a minimum cost for us, for example, decorations and everything, and that would go in turn with if we needed to rent tables and tents, and then we would um obviously present that to you and the city, and if it's approved, then you know, we go.
This one, I'm helping you with that one, right?
I believe so, well, he yourself, and then we'll have to meet with all the other um board members as well, I guess we'll have to have some um special meetings, so we can, planning meetings just for it, cuz it's gonna take all of us to um be a part of that and make sure that we have our programming and everything down.
So that could be a workshop, instead of like a meeting, okay.
Perfect, sounds great, thank you very much, I appreciate all.
Amber, maybe one good solution is for uh it is many of the upcoming events, we could even label it on the agenda as work work session, but then say updates as necessary, so that way it can be on there, and if you feel there's something, but you don't have to feel bad, cuz
Right.
You know, if there's not any updates that we.
Exactly, yeah, thank you very much.
On that note, when we do stuff like this, um, do we have to take out a special permit through the city, the uh a special um events permit?
We we will coordinate it, if there's food, sometimes we do have to get a permit from E H S or um, but and we coordinate all the time with our parks folks, so I don't know if we would formally do an application, but we would get fully Dennis would coordinate with everyone.
Yeah, I I I think you you probably will have an advantage in terms of accessibility. But I think it's important that it get it that it kinda takes some kinda shape as soon as possible.
Yes.
Because if 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 city employees will be involved, um that's kind of getting toward the end, we we this year we're having five special events. Uh, with the last one, probably sometime. I think the Color Fest is sometime in April, so if the expectation is gonna be to involve uh uh city employees, uh and it's, and we're talking about a Saturday, um, there's um and and even if it's a weekday, chances are there's gonna be overtime involved, so I know that we we budget all of these kinds of things, so we have to be mindful about all of that, plus frankly, I my sense is uh that by the by the time spring rolls around and summer, the staff are are pretty well tapped out. Uh, and so I I think we're gonna have to be very careful about um what 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 resources, so I think that's why sooner we know those things, we can figure out if we can make it happen.
That way, it'll be like on a volunteer basis, that way we don't have to tap out city employees um on it, so.
And I think the food permit will be already with the person that is carrying the food, so we don't have to worry about that, and the alcohol permit, we know how to get it.
Yeah, and then just with um, I I just need to know if there's any permits that I need to get from the county and the city.
And we can talk more Friday as well, but I'll talk a little bit more about that.
I'm I'm really excited to see this come. I mean, all of them, I say that about everything, but.
I I just think it's wonderful, especially it's a chance for, oh, it's also an opportunity for us to step out just from here as board members into the community to, you know, help support the library, the library staff and everything does so much that it I guess it's the least that we can do in our positions to help you guys, so.
Help them do the great work that they do. Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to item D, reports.
So so I I emailed a pretty lengthy report to um um everyone. Uh, some of them were a little bit information that you received uh the prior month that had updates to it, and um just to highlight a couple of things is that our, we had our first Senior Appreciation Day in Health and Wellness Fair. Uh, we made some amazing connections with uh the um A A A, the Area Agency on Aging, um, the Behavioral Health, a lot of great people, a lot of resources out there, I I was not aware of, um, so it's amazing to know that those resources are out there, so we can once again collaborate um with other um s- services to bring those services to the library. Um, so we have our community can access those, um, and then the exciting part with we've been talking about is with the the garden, the gardening is getting ready. Um, our new irrigation system arrived yesterday afternoon, uh, we've met with our um master gardeners, and they are currently packaging um this library seeds to check out um for the this, for fall planting, winter harvesting, and um so we're going to have some fun, like rainbow carrot colored carrots and all all kinds of amazing things that people can plant at home, and um our major volunteer, Krista Flores, uh, who spoke at the ribbon cutting, she is actually, she planted the seeds to grow the seedlings that will be going into the the garden, um, once once everything gets planted. Uh, we did go out and seek um donations for um the soil, um, because each year we need to replenish the soil. Uh, we we received some good feedback, uh, we haven't received any donations yet, so um we're we are going to submit, we we have that budgeted, we'll be submitting, we're that will be submitted tomorrow to the city manager's office, and then we'll go down in person and hopefully um find some some soil bags that have some holes or something in them, maybe they the discount, um, and then I provided our, on the very first part of the report was about the zip books that to date, nothing has been said. Hot off the press at five forty-three P M, I received an email that we um received um grant grant funding, and uh the award amount has not been announced yet, but within the next couple of weeks, we will be receiving um more information about our zip books. Um, that is a thank you to Robert, Robert is our library ed- assistant um that works at the the circulation desk, and he actually manages all the orders, he he does the reports uh to the state library, and um so I told him congratulations uh tonight. So, and then um Liz also, just really, really fast, um there's there's a co-op for the lib- San Diego and Imperial County Libraries, and so um every um four times a a year, um, the the Sarah Board meets, which I'm part of. And there's three committees, and um sits in San Diego, all the meetings are basically in San Diego, but with Zoom now, we're able to participate more, um, but it is nice to go to the libraries as well and see what they offer, and you know, it opens your eyes, um, but recently, we um I I had three staff who agreed to serve on those committees, so we can have our seat at the table either via Zoom or in person. And so uh Liz is serving on the Youth Services Committee, um our librarian is serving on the Adult Committee, and our library tech um is serving on the Technology Committee, so we have, we're at every, we're attending all meetings now, and we're receiving that information, and with the Liz, with the Youth Services, she jumped right in on board, um, they, every year, the um Youth Youth Services Committee provides a annual training at the San Diego um Library Downtown. And she is actually providing a class, and she's sitting on the panel regarding our our garden um program, so and one of our master gardeners will be attending with her as well to provide information to um the the attendees, so I'm very proud of our 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 team that's jumped in and and um, just getting to know everybody and and getting things done.
I'm telling you, bro. So good, so so good, thank you, Amber, um I'm like trying to see really quick if there was something that had come, like.
No, I'm just gonna comment, thank you for finding all these amazing grants and applying for it, this is.
City Manager Reports.
Nothing for me this evening.
Alright, um, and then item D three, a President and Trustee Reports, I'll start this way, Trustee Soto Mayor, do you have anything to report?
Uh, no, I just had a quick call, when is the State of the City again?
Is that the first farmer uh signature event, the State of the City?
So so parade, well, uh, yeah. Yeah, October nineteenth at five o'clock. Parade of Lights is December thirteenth at six.
Wait, yeah, put a pin, pause, will we be participating in the Parade of Lights? Yeah, because I've been I've been contemplating this like for months, and I'm like, I need to bring it up, I need to bring it up.
I would, I would have, eh, maybe if you talk to Kristen and give back to them on that, cuz the city has a, you know, they can tell you what's involved in it, and if there's there's space.
If we have to build some books and light them up, you know what I mean, that's that's what I'm talking about, participation, like having a good like, you know, a library themed something.
Is is there a theme to the parade?
I don't know.
Thank you for bringing that up now, typically. Like the uh Wednesday before the light parade, like, hey, we should be in the parade. Do our best to make it happen.
December thirteenth at six, and then I don't see.
I didn't see Christmas in a small town?
Yeah, Christmas in a small town is is after that, it's December fourteenth at one. Color Fest is January twenty-fifth at noon. Carnival is. Carnival is February fifteenth. Yeah, we usually did before, and now they they added that one, and then um Blues, Brews and Barbecue is March twenty-second at five.
That one used to be in February.
I I really think we need to consider to be on the um on the Parade of Lights.
Is it is a carnival one, another one? That's a, it says, join us now, this is a lively Brazilian carnival themed festival in downtown, so yes.
I like it.
And then we have a whole committee that works on the parades, and so Kristen would be a good resource for that, Amber.
We will help you, we'll we'll get, we'll get the truck and everything that we need, we just just need to help you with decorations, let us.
I've I've built big props before, they weren't pretty, but in the dark, I mean, no one's gonna. Uh, just the light on it, I was like.
I I just remember last year, at we had a whole group of people, there was, they were using that um back room at the the city hall building, and they were bending their candy canes and, you know. the city hall building and they were bending their candy canes and you know.
I mean, I would not be opposed to helping, you know, cause uh that's it's that's our baby.
Or even the Nutcracker, some of us have little kids that we could dress up.
We talk can talk a little bit Friday and then I'll put that on the work session for next. Do you, would you like to appoint um a?
It's kinda helpful because then people's.
Yeah, I I I will be on that. I will be on the parade.
Doesn't mean you have to stick with it or or you know, you're in charge, but having somebody.
That one's that one's that one's right here. I can't tell you, I don't even know how many years ago I actually put on that parade, so it's it's a special.
So for the ad hoc committee.
But I think you can only have two, right?
Two for the coordinating at at the beginning, yeah. And then once we're in volunteer mode, you guys can all be in the same room and all helping each other.
I say
I I'm not clear on what we're doing. Sorry, for the Parade of Lights, we want to participate in a float. Um so we're going to be coordinating our participation, um decorations.
And it's going to be December the thirteenth?
December thirteenth? It's like at six o'clock.
But perhaps I'm not the right person for the ad hoc, because I will not be in town that day, but I will help with the preparations and if I.
I I will be in town, but unfortunately I can help out only on the weekends. Maybe I can help like the Friday, the sixth, Saturday, Sunday. Weekdays are pretty packed.
I think um uh we can coordinate the logistics, but the actual hands-on portion, there's nothing that says that we can't.
I and and I think it just makes it easier, because then somebody's moving it along, but you definitely don't, I mean it helps to if if. But it's certainly not intended to be, okay, you guys have to do it all.
So we are building a float.
Something to think about. Because we did we did have a float and 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 the council was invited to uh be on the float and then it the question comes, well, what about families? So then five people becomes twenty people, like really fast, and so that's something to think about in terms of what you have in mind. We we have some limited resources in terms of uh I recall the because I think a year since that happened, the council has expressed the preference to have to be in like individual kinds of vehicles as opposed to the float. Um I'm not sure why, uh but that's the way it's been the last couple of years. So we have some limited resources in terms of a trailer. And the it there's quite a bit of room on there, uh but uh anyway, something to think about in terms of if if you would wanna have a plus one, plus kids and and of course then we we if there's kids and we get a little bit concerned about kids falling off and stuff, so uh not eh eh not that that.
I have a suggestion. So if we're worried about kids on floats and let's say we take it from a Christmas book, I mean even the the Nutcracker, I mean you can have, we can be walking with ballerinas, little girl. And we could be carrying the books and some of us nutcrackers, just say just saying.
May maybe we just have the kids walking or dancing in the floor and the adults in the float.
Yeah, you guys will see the options, I mean, well, well, ta- some people the kids like the scooters or the bikes or everybody's different, so maybe when you start looking at what resources they have you'll be able to, but this one's got, we get a forum, we find out what we need to say about each group, you know, so we've got it pretty well down and and Kristen and Amber will be able to walk you through that and we'll come up with options.
I have an idea when I can get the trailer for free. I got it before, so I just have to call our mayor tomorrow.
I I have a I have a client. As a trucking company, I could ask.
The decoration and what are we gonna wear? Cause we wanna stand up.
May maybe we have our mission statement done by then and that sort of description, I don't know, I'm just.
I don't think I have seen any of the other libraries in the parade before.
I don't recall libraries showing up.
Well then let's throw the gauntlet down and get all the libraries on board with us.
There is a first time for everything. Alright, so I think we were I know.
That was mine, that was I was more of a question than a report, so I'm done.
Are we finding ourselves up and then do we need to set up an actual date now as to when are we meeting and maybe discussing, I'm not sure.
I think once we do the ad hoc committees, we're hoping that those things will just take place between the the two people who are kinda taking the lead on coordinating will work with Amber and kind of individually reach out, cause it may change, it's not su- supposed to be something extremely formal or to take up a lot of your time.
I can send you an email and then we can coordinate with Amber and keep a lookout for the application. Um and then we can start exploring what our options are for the flow and maybe go with the theme, it it'll be pretty simple. I'll send you an email. Thank you, alright, Vice President Estes, do you have anything to report?
Everything is okay.
Alright, Trustee Banda, anything to report? Trustee Alta Mirano? Alright, um I don't think I have anything to report, we have a lot of um tasks in front of us to tackle and I'm excited to see what the next few months look like. Besides, I look at October and I'm like It is better weather, but it brings a lot of events, um so we will, I look forward to seeing everyone if I think we'll meet before um Fiesta de los Muertos, but we will be there in support um of our fellow Parks and Rec and I think if there's nothing else to.
Well, I have questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so what is happening for the Dia de los Muertos?
That is gonna be the State of the City. I think it's October nineteen.
Okay, but we're not gonna be here.
No, you don't have to write, I mean, these are just the the events that are being put on by the city.
That's why I don't have it.
You're right, we're gonna be in Pasadena that day. Well, we can share pictures of you guys being here and pictures of us being in Pasadena representing.
Absolutely. Alrighty, um so then we will see some of you at Fiesta de los Muertos. Um and I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting, the next regular scheduled meeting of the Imperial City Library Board of Trustees is Tuesday, October eighth.